I'd like to file the first meeting, 2003, to order today. For the benefit of the audience and the benefit of the people watching us, the audio is out locally, which is here, and also which is being transmitted on the TV. And I understand we got a caption on the TV that says that my mouth is moving. I am talking, but we have video. I forgot the video with no audio. Okay. Now, having said that, before we get started, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today. And I would like to present some and introduce some. So we'll start over here. On my far right, I would present to you the Honorable Bruce Holmes from District 5. I would also like to present to you the Honorable Brian Peston from District 2. I would like to introduce to you a new member, Gary Barn from District 3. I'd also like to introduce you, Tommy Smith. I'm the chairman. Introduce to you Bo Moss, the Commissioner from District 1. The Honorable Reed Bowman, I want to present to you him, and he is from District 4. Now, having said that, if we could all rise, please, in the invocation, and then if you would, or if you're able, and remain standing for the prayers to the United States flag. Bow your heads, please, if you are able. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for the opportunity to be here in a free world. And I pray that other people throughout the world within town will enjoy the same privileges and freedom that we have. I pray that you would bless each and one of us up here as we do in the people's business, and guide us, give us wisdom, and help us to make a reasonable equitable decision. In your name we pray, amen.
Our gracious, holy, and great, United States of America, and true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like, if someone would be so kind as to approve the agenda as published. Have a motion, or a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay? Sir?
Sorry.
All in favor, raise your right hand. In favor of the...
I wanted to make a motion to amend the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we...
You've already made, I'm sorry.
No, what we can do, we now have a motion to amend the agenda. Two.
We can do it later.
No, we can do it now.
Okay. All right. I was going to make a motion to amend the agenda as far as the appointments were concerned to give the new commissioners an opportunity to have some meetings and to get with these seven, actually six or seven, that we have under their appointments, and to amend it to leave the county clerk on there and only have that particular one under their appointments. And once again, that's to give the new people an opportunity to meet with and to get a better understanding of what these six or seven do for us.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
In discussion, I would like to go along with that with the exception of the county manager. And reason being, I think at this meeting here, we need to discuss the county manager's As we know, the manager is under contract through March. I think we ought to keep him through March. I think to protect the integrity of the highest executive official in our organization, we has clouds on it, and I think we need, and I would suggest, to protect the integrity that we discuss that even in open session or an executive session. I think it'd be appropriate to discuss it in public session because we're not talking about terminating, we're not talking about disciplinary actions, we're really not talking about hiring. So, having said that, I would like to talk about that, and what I would do is entertain a motion that, in the process of the county manager staying here through March, is to take applications and go through the process, as it's been based on past practice, narrow it down to 12 people, the board entirety, in executive session, interview 10 or 12 people, and then reduce it down to three names, and then we'll publish those three names, and then the county manager can reapply, and if he ends up being the one out of the three, then we can just merely enter into an extension or renew the contract. Now, having said that, in conjunction with that, I would like to check with DC and find out the salaries for the county manager for the size of Henry County, compatible, and see what the salaries are. And I think in order to be competitive through the market, we need to look at that, and then I was going to ask that the county that we consider negotiating the salary. But having said that, any further discussion?
Just point of order is that we got a motion to amend the agenda, remove item 7 with the exception of the county clerk, which is 7C.
Except the clerk.
So I'm kind of confused as how we move forward with, did you propose an alternative?
No, what I'm seeing here is on the corner of order, you vote on this motion, which is on there to amend the original agenda. If that fails, then I will make a sequential motion to keep A and C on board and not put the others on there. I would be prepared to do that.
So initially, we're voting for Reed's motion, and then you're making another amendment?
If his motion passes, there will be no sequential motion. If the motion passes, then it would amend the agenda, and then we vote on that, and then it goes back in the agenda. We vote on the agenda, which has been amended. But if it's not favorable, then I'm going to entertain, I'm not entertaining, I'm going to make a motion that we do everything he said except add the county manager's job in that discretion.
So if Reed's motion passes, then we're just voting on Reed's motion, we're not discussing the county manager, correct?
Yes. If you vote, if you vote for this motion, you are accepting, obviously, the county manager, the, we don't have an executive secretary, that's, see, that needs to be discussed too because we don't have one. The executive assistant to the board, we don't have one of those, so I wanted to discuss that as far as possibility, and then communications director. I don't see, without debating the issue on a sequential motion, that's my feelings. And so if the motion passes, then we move on. But if it doesn't pass, then I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a significant motion that would be to include, I'll just make a motion that will assign or to appoint people to these positions. And the one just empty, I'd want to have discussion to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the very first motion that was made, there was a second, but it was not voted upon, so the second needs to be withdrawn at this time, if you all want to proceed with another motion to entertain Commissioner Bowman's motion. If not, then there should be a vote on the very first motion.
You gotta talk louder for us.
I'm sorry, is my microphone?
No, we don't have audio.
I'm so sorry. The very first motion that was made, there was a second to that motion before Mr. Bowman entertained or presented an alternative motion. So it's my recommendation that the board, either whoever made the second, either withdraw the second, so then you can have a new motion as presented by Mr. Bowman, or vote on the initial motion that was made and properly seconded, because that's still pending.
On the first motion?
Yes, sir.
As a matter of fact, it was already had voted on.
Well, I checked with the clerk to see if it was voted on, and she hasn't recorded a vote.
No, we didn't vote.
Yeah, I saw hands going up.
I saw hands, but I don't think it was recorded. I don't know if a vote was found or recorded.
What you're saying, point of order, you're saying that the amendment to the agenda is out of order. Okay. Having said that, I'm going to have to ask you, does anybody agree that we accept that the second motion was out of order? I accept it without going further. So if you would withdraw that, that would...
I can hail a motion when we get to item number seven.
That's exactly right, okay. We have...
It's not a problem, and I have a, I'm sorry, you're speaking.
No, you go ahead.
I'm curious, the chairman has stated that he would make a motion. I'm wondering if the chair can make a motion.
The chair, under the organizational...
I wish I could hear you.
I'm sorry.
Did you give me some time? No, the whole audio is out. No, I would come up here. I would come here because that's out, too. And that way, we can all hear you.
The chair is a full voting member of this board under the constitutional rules of the county, so the chair has full voting privileges and can make a motion. The chair also has additional privilege of deciding not to vote if the chair chooses to do so, or the chair can vote and the chair can't make a motion.
The only reason I asked the question was to clear it up because in six years, I've never seen the chair make a motion, but I understand, and I'm okay with that. I just, I just, you know, I'm okay with it. I just, like I said, in six years, I've never seen any of them, you know, so I'm okay. I just, I want to clarify.
To be completely honest, when the legislators created the full-time chairman, they did give the chair the right to vote. Okay, there is a little ambiguous article in there that, before this happened, indicated that the chair would only vote in case of a tie. So what I'm saying, and I got an opinion on this, if the chair can vote, then obviously the chair is clothed with all the other amenities that...
You're gonna see it out there, see, you have, you know, with something you have and I would do clear the question.
Yes, sir. You're gonna see a lot of things if you haven't seen it before.
Well, I'll ask the clerk to say...
Yes, sir. Okay, we have a withdrawal of the second motion. The motion is to accept the agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Can we start it all over? I didn't, I didn't...
The Honorable Commissioner withdrew his motion to amend it. Okay, now, we go back, we're now voting on the original to accept the agenda as published. That's the original motion.
Oh, to accept the agenda, okay.
Okay, all in favor, indicate with your right hand.
Can we start all over?
The current law commissioner is to vote on a motion that was made and seconded to accept the agenda.
To accept the agenda.
As is.
That's what's in front of us.
With the county manager and everything else.
All those positions listed on the agenda, that's the current motion.
Okay, we have a second, had discussion, now we're voting to accept the agenda as Okay, I'm going to say the vote went, it couldn't be five and zero, but anyway, all opposed, same sign.
So that motion failed.
That motion failed, so now we have to have a motion to address the composition of the agenda before we can move on. Now, this motion would be appropriate at this time. It has to be. So I would entertain a motion from the floor that would have some significant impact to putting an agenda in place that we can vote on, up or down.
All right, sir, I re-entered my motion to reduce it down to the county clerk, once again, to give the new board members opportunity, and I think the opportunity should actually go to everyone, including the county manager, who we also understand is under contract. But I want to make the motion that we do, we reduce it to the county clerk, and I've given my reason for that.
Second.
We have a second, discussion. If we're going to do that, that means that we're going to pick and choose the clerk, and I think, my mind is that we retain Shea as the clerk, so if we're going to keep all of these, then that means that we taking Shea out and going to appoint her, is that...
Correct, it's my understanding that the motion on the floor that passes, then at the time of appointment, is that on the agenda.
We're going to appoint Shea.
We're going to vote on appointing the county clerk.
Okay, so that means the others by organization is no longer in that position. Is that what we're saying?
Under your organizational chart, under the Trump code of county ordinances, there is no specific directive to appoint any of those individuals that are listed, the seven. The county clerk position is appointed, and normally is appointed during the first year, the first meeting of the term, or the first calendar year. So there is no equivalent provision with respect to any of the other six positions.
Okay. We have a motion, any further discussion? All in favor, the motion say aye. All opposed, no. No. I vote no. Having said that, the agenda has been accepted. Appointment of the vice chair. I move that we appoint the distinguished gentleman from District 4, Mr. Reed Bowman, as the chairman for the year 2013-2014.
Second.
Have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand.
I don't think vote from a second.
All opposed, no. The Honorable gentleman is in extension because it is him, so the record show it will be five and one. Moving down to the appointments of the authorities, boards, and authorities, we'll start with the rec. department, we'll start with District 1, and that would be Bo Moss.
Yes, I move to appoint Tommy Mitchell to the recreation board.
Do you have a motion, have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Who seconded the motion, Mr. Chairman? Who seconded the motion?
I thought Reed did. I thought he did.
I did, I raised my hand.
I know, as far as seconding the motion, I claim me and you both seconded.
I say, I mean, I say.
By FAA standards, my right ear is two decimal better than my, I mean, my left ear is two decimal better than my right ear, so I heard him and I didn't hear him, so. Okay, moving on to District 2.
Yeah, I'm still working on, trying to put all that together, there's still some outstanding...
District 3.
I move to nominate David Wilkerson for the recreation board.
There's a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor, raise your right hand. Got you. District 4.
Terry Sanchez.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All, raise your right hand. That makes it simple for the, it makes it easy for me to go yea and nay, but it makes it difficult for the clerk, so I'm going to try to transfer over from yays and nays to the lifting of the hand, so you all have to bear with me. So if you have difficulties until I get in this mode, would you be so kind as to bring that to my attention? District 5.
I move to nominate Eugene Edwards.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Now, we're moving down to the water authority, District 1.
Yeah, I move to appoint Mike Barr to the water authority board.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. District 2.
Still working on. Proceed to District 3.
District 3.
I move to nominate Jimmy Carr.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say a correction. All in favor, raise your right hand. District 4.
District 4 is Harold Jenkins.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. District 5.
Kalado Harrell.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Moving down to the zoning advisory board, District 1.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Larry King.
There's a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. District 2.
Make a motion to appoint to the zoning advisory board, Mr. Edward Tony.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. District 3.
I move to re-appoint Jim Rich.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. District 4.
Pinky backrilled.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, a correction, discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. District 5.
Delander Nelson.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Chairman, Mr. Larry Bab.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Raise your right hand if you're in favor of said motion. Development Authority, District 1.
Yeah, I move to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Cottle to development authority board.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, right hand. I'm not going through the process of saying right hand for yes and right hand for no because so far, the chair has observed that everybody's voting favor, so if people feel uncomfortable without having a no vote, it's kind of moot to me when it's unanimous. So if I don't have a problem with that, I will continue the practice.
Just announce unanimous. He would just announce perhaps that it was passed by unanimous vote, Mr. Chairman, if you announced that the motion passed by unanimous vote?
Okay, I announced that all previous motions have passed. I didn't have to say that after each one, I thought once the clerk recorded it, if it was non-passed, if somebody was squealed.
Oh, you're right, Mr. Chairman, it's just because we don't have any...
Okay, okay.
And everyone's not raising their hand above the... Everyone is not raising their hand above the bench, so we can't see, she can't see because everyone is not waving their hand above the bench.
Okay, okay, I got you. So we, this is our first meeting, we're now learning, and what we ought to be, we're now becoming. We're now putting the fine tuning on it, and hopefully we'll come close to being a new Swiss watch. But anyway, District 2.
I want to make a motion to re-appoint John Bozeman to the development authority.
Second.
Have a second, any discussion?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It appears motion carries five and zero, correction, six and zero. District 3.
I move to appoint Charles Mobley.
Have a second?
Second.
Have any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. I'm going to say it went five and one, the chair being in opposition. Lobby board, District 1.
I have the development authority, if you want me to go ahead, because I'm ready to have it. Oh, man, don't come up there.
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, sir. If you want to change somebody out right now, it would be a prime time to do it, sir.
No, 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 man, span, I just didn't say it earlier, I didn't, I wasn't thinking, I got you.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
You don't have to apologize to me. If you'll accept all my apologies when I make errors, I will extend you the courtesy. Lobby board, District 1.
Yes, I move to appoint Ms. Mary Ann Moister.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? Favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Are you not voting?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, you gotta bring it up, just a little bit higher. Motion carries six and zero. District 2.
Still working on, you proceed to District 3.
Working on, okay. District 3.
I move to appoint Sandy McGary.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six and zero. The chair, I move that we appoint Janice Lowe, she's already on the board, she's done a good job, I'll move that we approve that. There's a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries six and zero. The council on aging, this is a task for some because they have to do three appointments, so we'll start out with District 1.
Mr. Chairman, this time I hadn't made a decision on that.
Okay, so you're going to defer for a later day. District 2.
I'd like to make a motion, there is a slight correction on the agenda, I'd like to appoint, they're both already serving Geraldine Tanner, it's got Gerald, but Geraldine Tanner and Carolyn Floyd.
So who was the third one?
I still have a outstanding other third one.
We have a moment to Geraldine Tanner and Carolyn Floyd, they're already on there, so there's a second.
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 Any discussion? All in favor, say a correction, raise your right hand. Motion carries six and zero. District 3.
I move to re-appoint Jamie McGary, Charlie Thompson, and Judy Gilbert.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six and zero. Now, we're moving down to Article 7, appointments, and since we already know, I'm going to yield the floor to distinguished gentlemen from District 4.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to yield the floor to the distinguished gentleman because I already know you have a motion pending in the well.
Right, the boardman, I, I don't know, you have the floor, say, that is...
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say, raise your right hand. Motion carries six and zero. Do we have any people sign up for public comment?
No.
None. Okay, at this time here, with the position, permission of the board, I would like to put between public comments, which you have in the county manager comment, I would like to add a comment, which is not going to be an agenda item, but to allow the board and myself to have comments if you have any. What I want to do is kind of give the audience a little preview as to preview as to where we're going on the agenda. First thing, do I have a consensus that we can move in this direction? Does anybody object to this? Okay. Yes means you object, or it don't mean you don't object, right? You don't object, okay.
No, no, I should be...
Okay, one of the things that I'm going to try to do during the course of the year is keep the citizens abreast as to what's going on. Right now, I'm going to give you a briefing as to some things that's going on. One is, give you a little background, in 1948, Congress approved what they call the Safe Water Drinking Act. Okay, what that did, it was starting to, the process of protecting our drinking water. So as time went on, they added to it, they modified, they added to it. So right now, we normally refer to it as stormwater, and it has changed significantly in where they encourage you to do certain things now, it's a mandate. Okay, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, like the commissions in, I guess, throughout the United States, they are charged by EPA to administer this program in certain ways. And if you get your, once you get your tax notice, you'll notice it has a stormwater fee, which is like $39 or so, and this is what this covers. Now, we are in a position now to where the, this board, not that they have an interest in it, but we're in a position to where we would like to enter into a discussion with the Henry County Water Authority to designate this to them, for them to administer this program. Just bringing it up to speed, I always thought that the Henry County Water Authority should have always been the keeper of protecting our safe water because right now, they provide and will be about 95% of all of the drinking water in Henry County. And having said that, they, it's their responsibility to provide safe water, and Henry County at this moment is provided to protecting their safe water. So not just good or bad, not that it would ever happen, but I just want to tell the people that we're going to enter into conversation, have been... the people that we're gonna enter into conversation, have been in conversation, and I got in on the, the tail end of, the conversation started in November in the last administration. And anyway, I've, I've been involved in it, we're discussing this, and the water authority is, is interested in entertaining the idea. Now, keep in mind, it is a whole lot of moving parts, and if it ever happens, number one, it has to happen, if you make it completely legal, there has to be local legislation that will allow the BLC to delegate that authority to the Henry County Water Authority. Now, at the moment, we have had a couple meetings, and, and we do, I do, I do the five, five Ps, pipe running prevents pool performance, so whether the board goes along with this a lot, I know there's some interested attorneys have got together and drafted some legislation that will most likely come up this session. Reason it comes up in this session is the fact that if the county, Henry County BLC and Water Authority gets together eight or nine months down the road, they don't have to wait till the next legislative session to authorize that. Now, once the general assembly approves this on local legislation, it doesn't mean you'll ever have to use it, but if you use it this year, or next year, or, or three years down the road, it, it gives the BLC the authority to enter into such an agreement. Now, this is not, I, I'm not saying this is ever gonna happen, because you can imagine how many detention ponds we've got in Henry County, we've got literally thousands of them. You can imagine how many miles of twenty-foot drainage we have in all these subdivisions, and right now, in the last several years, we, we've got six hundred new subdivisions, so it, it's significant, we got it right away, okay? That's part of the salt erosion, sedimentation, stormwater program, so it, it's, it's not gonna be a quick fix. And I can tell you that if, if Roy Clark, not Roy Clark, but if many former and I sat down today, and we worked on this all day, we might have something to present to the board probably in eight months. That's how complicated it is. But what I'm saying is, I'm putting the public on notice that we're in discussion. And right now, it, it's, it's a beginning, as time goes on, obviously, when we're discussing and negotiating, it's gonna be a lengthy process, and I will share with you from time to time as to where the board might be, not the details, because that's a, it, we don't have any secrets up here, but obviously, you got to understand, we have a lot of confidential information that, negotiating, you have to keep that in house. Now, having said that, I just want y'all to know that we're moving in that direction. Another item, uh, we, we're gonna try diligently to come up with a system that we will allow the citizens to speak during the course of an issue. I don't know if we can work that out. Right now, we, we're on a honeymoon, and I'm gonna say this, if you'll notice, during the charter thing, Henry County used to have two meetings, one they call the workshop, and one they call the regular meeting. Okay, I, I tried to find out through legal counsel as to how we got to the, the two meeting scenario, and we couldn't. Now, we may go back to that as, as the economy changes and we get busy, but right now, we're gonna do the charter meeting. One is the first Tuesday of each month, a day shift configuration, and the second one will be a, on the third Tuesday, and it will be an evening shift configuration. Okay, now, having said that, you're probably wondering why this is the second Tuesday. Okay, the, the, the rule says that if the first Tuesday falls on a holiday, then it must be the next Tuesday. So this is why we're having the first meeting on the second Tuesday and not the first, because if you go back, the first was, first of the year is a holiday. Now, having said that, we're gonna try to figure out a way to where we can allow the citizens, within reason and time, to address an issue before we vote. Uh, I don't know if we can work all that out, I don't know, but anyway, it, 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 it worked good in other smaller governments. On a larger government, as we get busier, as the economy, and, and I hope, I really hope the economy goes at such a rate that next month, we'll have four meetings, five meetings, but I'm, I'm sure that ain't gonna happen, but as the economy goes and the length of the meetings and all the matter that we'll have to discuss will change. So having said that, I would like to yield the floor to any commissioner that would like to make any comment at this time. I see none. Mr. County Manager, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Uh, County Attorney.
No, sir.
Uh, upcoming meetings and events. Tuesday, January the fifteenth at six thirty P M, the regular board meeting, Monday, January the twenty-first, all county offices will be closed, and it's a reference to Martin Luther King holiday. Tuesday, February the fifth, nine A M, and Tuesday, February the nineteenth, is a regular meeting. Do we have an executive session?
On the nineteenth, on the nineteenth, you don't have a time on that.
Uh, Tuesday, February the fifth, nine A M.
On the nineteenth.
That would be six thirty.
Okay, it's not on the...
Okay. Uh, we, we have a, we're not gonna amend the budget just to show that, we're gonna add on that that, uh, February the nineteenth meeting will be at six thirty P M. Anybody, anybody get that? Okay, uh, we have anything, executive session?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything for executive session.
Okay, thank you so much. Making a comment on executive session, uh, in, in, in the future, we are going to designate and limit to executive session issues. For example, if we have, uh, pending litigation, then if we don't have any personnel issues, if we don't have any, uh, future acquisitions of estate, we're gonna limit that executive session to what's on the agenda. Now, I can tell you right now, uh, most of them would be the three, uh, but we're not gonna specify the, the issue, but we will specify the category. And that way, when, when we go into executive session, you know we're gonna, gonna talk about certain things, personnel or that, but, and, and as time goes on, uh, we're not gonna do the blanket, it would probably end up being blanket, but I just wanna put y'all on notice that, that to do that. Obviously, we're not gonna reconvene, uh, obviously, we're not gonna have to execute an affidavit, so unless anybody has any business that needs to be discussed at this time, I would move we adjourn. There is a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Meetings over.